April 20th, 2021 council meeting is called back into session. Count Vice Chair Lady Swerengen.
I moved to adjourn the April 20th, 2021 meeting.
May I get a second?
Second.
Second. All right, been moved by Vice Chair Lady Swerengen, seconded by Councilman Warren. Do we have any unfinished business? Hearing none. The April 20th City Council meeting is hereby adjourned without objection. Sergeant Arms caller, May 4th, 2021 council meeting to order. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize our chaplain for the day, Pastor John Forbes of the Life Church of Austin P., invited by Council Lady Logan. Pastor Forbes, please lead us in prayer.
Thank you Chairman Collette. Thank you again Councilwoman Logan, and it's a huge honor to be before you today. Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you today, and we thank you God for our Memphis City Council. We thank you God that you would grant them wisdom, God, in the decisions that they're going to make, and I pray God that you would give them grace and that you would give them favor, God, for every matter that is before them today. I thank you God that your word says that through the blessing of the upright, a city is exalted. And so we thank you God for their leadership, we thank you God for their vision, for their boldness to lift up our city, and we pray God that it would lead us into an era of prosperity, God, that has never been seen before. We thank you for it all, in Jesus mighty name, amen.
Thank you for that prayer. We could all sit before we do the pledge. Council Lady Logan, you're recognized.
Thank you, thank you, Pastor. I'm sorry, thank you Chair, thank you Pastor. Just wanted to recognize Life Church and Pastor Josh in the community. They're always open and receptive to the community and always meeting the need, and I just thank him for the spiritual direction and guidance that they provide for our community, and we're glad for him to be here today with us.
Thank you very much. To read the formal. Be it hereby known that Pastor Josh Forbes, in recognition of a life of exemplary quality, outstanding service to the city, meritorious involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrated concern for governmental process, has been appointed Chaplain of the Day of the Memphis City Council, and is hereby entitled to all the honors, rights, privileges, and prerogatives appertaining to the office, and display of this certificate given under the seal this fourth day of May, 2021, signed by Chairman Frank Collette, and presented and seconded by Council Lady Logan, without objection. Pastor, thank you so much. Councilman Warren, raise your hand and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. Madam Comptroller, roll call.
Councilmember Canali.
Here.
Carlisle.
Present.
Easter Thomas.
Present.
Ford.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Jones.
Here.
Logan.
Present.
Morgan.
Here.
Robinson.
Present.
Smiley.
I'm here.
Vice Chairwoman Swerengen.
Present.
Warren.
Present.
Chairman Collette.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Comptroller. Madam Vice Chairman, have you read our meeting minutes for April 20th?
I've read the minutes, and find them to be in order, and I move for the adoption of the April 20th meeting minutes.
Second. All right, it's been moved by Vice Chair Lady Swerengen, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Madam Comptroller, please conduct a roll call vote on the previous meeting minutes.
Councilmember Canali.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Yes.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones.
Aye.
Logan. Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley. Vice Chairwoman Swerengen.
Present.
Warren.
Present.
Chairman Collette.
Uh, yes, that item passes. You're trying to throw me off, weren't you?
Don't be it.
Forgetting that's well wrong. All right, continuing on with our fun. Everyone, welcome to the May 4th, 2021 regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. A notice of the meeting was placed on the City Council webpage regarding how the public may electronically access the meeting and/or recording of the meeting, and how to provide written comments concerning any agenda item or any other matter pertaining prior to this meeting. Public comments were to be submitted to the Memphis City Council 24 hours prior to today's meeting. Vice Chairwoman Swerengen will read those comments at the appropriate time. She will only read those comments that included the requisite information, which was the person's name and address. Incomplete comments or Incomplete comments or those received late will be sent to council records and placed in the file. Items three and thirty-six for everyone will be held until June fifteenth. I thought it was thirty-six. Oh, that's an overcall. It's three and thirty-six or June fifteenth. Items eight, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight are held until July sixth. Item forty will be held until June one. And items nine and thirty-nine are withdrawn. I'll repeat. Items three and thirty-six are June fifteenth. Items eight, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight are held till July sixth. Item forty is held till June one. And items nine and thirty-nine are withdrawn. Good, good. Madam Comptroller, call item one.
Item number one is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of North Third Street between Looney Avenue and Chelsea Avenue for Mr. Tommy Pacello. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Carlisle. There's a request for same night minutes.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
Thank you Chairman. I'll read the resolution into the record. Whereas, when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council has seen fit to name certain public roads to honor citizens who have served this community. And whereas, the Memphis community lost a highly respected leader on Monday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty, with the passing of Mr. Tommy Pacello. And whereas, Tommy Pacello, born October thirty-first, nineteen seventy-seven, in Memphis, Tennessee, to Tom and Elaine Pacello, would dedicate his life's work to the bluff city he called home. And whereas Tommy, a graduate of Evangelical Christian School, earned a bachelor's degree from the University of Georgia and both a Juris Doctorate and Master's in Urban Planning from the University of Memphis. And whereas upon graduation, Tommy brought his passion and acumen for urban planning to the city attorney's office as Assistant City Attorney, where he was instrumental in revamping the Memphis Development Code, which modernized and revitalized the city's approach to zoning and development. And whereas, after briefly relocating to Austin, Texas for a job opportunity, Tommy stayed true to his word and returned home to Memphis to serve as Director of Memphis Mayor's Innovation Delivery Team, where he again helped solve critical issues facing Memphis, such as reducing gun violence and revitalizing blighted and economically depressed neighborhoods. And whereas, from twenty sixteen until his passing, Tommy served as President of the newly-formed Memphis Medical District Collaborative, guiding ambitious projects to give rise to growth in the medical district with the same ingenuity, sagaciousness, and passion for city planning used throughout his career. And whereas, as a leader, Tommy shined by fostering open, creative environments devoid of any barriers and encouraging his colleagues to think freely and boldly. Tommy's devotion to his colleagues' interests and well-being was so genuine, one colleague recalled Tommy appearing at her home to join her for a run as she trained for her first marathon. And whereas, in Tommy, in addition to Tommy's fierce intellect and dedication to innovative city planning, it was his ability to inspire others that built such momentum professional, monumental professional and personal legacy that will continue to touch the lives of Memphians for generations to come. And whereas Tommy will be most remembered as a devoted and loving father to Olivia, or loving husband to Olivia, and proud father to daughters Colette and Cecile. Whereas Tommy leaves behind a loving family and a grateful city that mourns the early loss of a celebrated, compassionate, and community-minded leader. And whereas, emblematic of his devotion to new urbanism, Tommy purchased and renovated an old fire station for his beloved growing family at the corner of North Third Street and Looney Avenue in Uptown, making no place in Memphis more fitting for the honorary street name change for Mr. Tommy Pacello. Now therefore be it resolved by the Memphis City Council that North Third Street between Looney Avenue and Chelsea Avenue be declared Tommy Pacello Street in honor of his life and many accomplishments. Be it further resolved that the city engineer's request requested to affix suitable signs designated to this public road, an ISO move.
It's been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilman Canali. Seeing no members in the cure seeking recognition, I assume.
Chairman, we have Mr. Pacello's family.
Okay. Oh, they're online. To the Pacello family, thank you so much for all that you've done for Memphis, and we, the city council, are honored to recognize Tommy like this, and we hope it is suitable. Well, because we know it's well deserving.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any further comments from council members seeking recognition? Seeing none, I assume you're ready to vote. Madam Comptroller, call the roll on item one.
Councilmember Canali.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley.
Ah.
Vice Chairwoman Swerengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Collette.
Aye, that item passes. Is everybody for item two in the room? Just because of the way spacing goes, I want to make sure everybody's in it. As Chairman, this is one of the most great things that I get to do, and I'm honored. Madam Comptroller, call item two.
Item number two is a resolution thanking Sophia Wardlaw, Deputy Chief of Staff, for her dedication to the Memphis City Council upon her retirement with twenty-seven years of service. This resolution is sponsored by all council members.
Thank you. I'll read the resolution in, but of course I would like to make the motion. May I have a proper second?
Second.
I think if the entire council moves it and seconds it. Whereas, with grateful appreciation of her dedication and loyalty, the Memphis City Council bids a fond farewell to Sophia Wardlaw, who is retiring with twenty-seven years of service to the city of Memphis. Whereas possessing a keen intellect that is complemented by her gentle and sweet demeanor, Sophia Wardlaw was a refreshing addition to the council staff, whose departure will leave an unquestionable void. And whereas, having spent almost three decades in the city council office, Sophia celebrated many personal and family highlights and career milestones, including completion of numerous professional development and leadership courses and ascension to the position of Deputy Chief of Staff based on her demonstrated abilities over her tenure. And whereas, devoting her entire career in government to the city council office, numerous current and previous elected officials were fortunate recipients of not only her knowledge, but the personal attention she offered to the public as an outstanding representative of the Memphis City Council. Whereas, recognizing Sophia's impactful leadership and lasting contributions, it is hoped that she will remember with fondness and pride her time spent in service to the Memphis City Council and the value she provided throughout her illustrious career. Whereas, delivering exceptional leadership during her tenure, Sophia vacates her position, having made a significant impression on her peers and council members, who will remember her willingness to always provide support and a lending hand, and are left with many examples to follow of how they should manage their duties, tasks, and interactions with members of the public, with an attention especially to grace and detail. Now therefore being resolved by the Memphis City Council, Sophia Wardlaw, be thanked at the platter for her twenty-seven years of service to Memphis City Council and the citizens of Memphis, and wish to have hearted congratulations and heartfelt prayer of an enjoyable retirement adopted May fourth, twenty twenty-one. We're blessed to have the mayor here. Would you like to say a few words?
I was just talking to her a little while ago. She was hired, I see the break there, y'all. The Chair of the Council was Florence Lepworth.
Oh wow.
And head of the council staff was Melanie Watt, if you remember those. She has helped so many council members and so many citizens. She's an outstanding analyst, but I think she's just a better person. And it was always, always good to be around Sophia. I just pray, wish you the best, and thank you so much.
I see Commissioner and former city councilman Dr. Edmund Ford Jr. is with us. Would you like to say a few words?
Close to the mic.
Close to the mic. I can use my teacher voice.
Okay. Well, look, let me just put it this way. With how many of the things that you expressed to me when I was running for office in two thousand and seven, many of the kind words, many of the blessings, many of the genuine spiritual things that you used to tell me when I used to make my trips from Nashville here, back and forth, where my father made sure that I was here at eight in the morning, driving from Nashville at five to get here for a city council meeting, just to either leave at eight o'clock to go back so I could teach, or get up at what time, three in the morning from the house to get back up. You were always there to let me know that this will probably be your destiny. You know, I remember when you were just the analyst, and I remember when Jim took all the wonderful people from the city council's office and, well, you took some very good people. I'm glad you left a few people here. But I know that there was a spot to be Juan S.'s deputy, and the first person that I mentioned to get that spot was you, because I knew you were ready. I remember when you started off as administrative assistant and you worked your way up. And I remember one thing that I mentioned telling you, I was like, I know there's some things that are destined for you. You looked at me and you said that there were things that you saw in me. I saw great things for you as well. And I know that the city council is going to miss you. And I know that we're going to miss you in not just this capacity, but look, you still family. So at the end of the day, I know that people will still call you, and Rod, you got a jewel of a woman, you already know that. And I remember many of the conversations that we had, and look, y'all just take care of each other, and congratulations again on a wonderful retirement, and that's all I really have to say. Thank you very much.
Councilman Jones, you're recognized.
Ms. Wardlaw, you know, we had an opportunity to meet when I was on the school board, and it was even more pleasant once I had the opportunity to work with you, once I was elected to the Memphis City Council. But in both instances, I found you to be resourceful, smart, kind, and really endearing to everybody that you came into contact with. And one of the other virtues that you have is patience, because knowing the people that you've had to serve with on here, you, well, all of you, you've all had to, in present company, mainly speaking for himself, the patience to deal with me as well as all of us. So we thank you for the service that you've provided in your twenty-seven years and working for the citizens of Memphis. You'll be greatly missed.
And, okay. And I'm told Barbara Swerengen Ware is online and would like to say a few words.
Thank you so much. What an honor it is to have been invited to be a part of this celebration that is so well deserving. Thanks so much to Juan S. and her staff and to the Memphis City Council for just allowing me to be a part of this occasion that says thank you to Sophia Wardlaw, who has been a jewel for all of us in the Memphis City Council. I had the honor and the privilege of working with Sophia in my sixteen and a half years as Councilwoman of District Seven. So many times when constituents would call and I, for some reason, was not readily available, Sophia would just take care of the situation and tell me later so that I could follow up. That was priceless, because that's what the city council is all about, taking care of the needs of our constituents. I served directly and indirectly with Sophia in all of those years. She was nothing less than honorable, delightful, caring, and certainly she was always there to do whatever she could. I'm reminded of the words of the song that says, "If I can help somebody as I pass along, if I can cheer somebody with a word or song, if I can show somebody that he's traveling wrong, then my living shall not be in vain." I will say that the life that Sophia Wardlaw lives extends to all of us. She has balance in her life. She has balanced it by being a wife, a mother, a coworker, a constituent. She's been a community leader in her own right, and you name it, and Sophia has been there to be there for us. And if we could use the work that Sophia has done in the Memphis City Council office for twenty-seven wonderful years, it would be a blessing for us to emulate her demeanor, her sweet attitude, her beautiful smile, her calming way of approaching any situation. Sophia, we love you, and we thank the Lord for you. And she reminds me of the Proverbs thirty-one lady. Sophia has the balance. She has the persona. She has everything that it takes to have an impact on all that she meets. But in Proverbs, it says, "Her children shall rise up and call her blessed, her husband also, and he will praise her in the gates." Today, Sophia, we praise you for the work that you've done. We praise you for the stamina that you've had in all of the difficult situations that you faced. You have understood that you didn't face them alone, but because of our personal relationship, I know that your hope and your trust has been in the Lord. Keep letting your light shine. It shines so brightly that darkness has to disappear. And I would say you are once, twice, three times a lady. We love you. We appreciate you. God bless you and congratulations. Thank you so much.
Councilman Ford?
I don't know if I want to come behind her. But everything she said, I want to say it too. But we go back about twenty-one years when I was elected the first time. Like she said, indirect and direct, when I was the Chair, you were there. Wonderful person, wonderful family husband. He was always there. I got to say for you, all the other analysts, administrative assistants, y'all are just like her. Y'all just still here. You were supposed to have been back with me this year. I'll let you go. But one thing I can say, you won't be going far, because we keep in touch. You, my wife, we keep in touch, and we're going to continue to do that, and you know I love you. My wife love you, my whole family love you, you know. But you be strong, you keep on going and going and going. God got your back. You don't have anything to worry about, okay? Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
For the councilman? Council Lady Robinson?
I would be remiss if I didn't say something about Sophia. You all think that this job is. is easy. It is not. And she would encourage me all the time. You all might not think I need encouragement, but she would see that some days I needed to be encouraged. And since she has been at home and healing, I've called to check on her, and we've had some wonderful, hard-to-hard conversations. But what I want her to know and you to know, she's made the best decision of her life, to spend time with her family, enjoy her retirement. And you can still support us in the background, because there are people in our community that she still helps and supports, and I know that about Sophia. So you all, when she called on you for help, for somebody else, please lend her a hand. I don't want to have to work too hard, but remember, she's going to do it anyway. God bless you. I love you. Enjoy your retirement. And Councilwoman Robinson is going to really retire right behind you.
Council Lady Swerengen?
I want everybody to know that this is my girl. Smart, encouraging.
She's smart, encouraging, confidential, passionate, loving, and a serious Christian. And when I think of Sophia, I think of my favorite fiction story, The Wizard of Oz. The scarecrow, he wanted a brain. Sophia, you have that brain. The tin man wanted a heart. Sophia, you have that heart. The lion wanted courage, and we know through all your toll, Lord, that you have gone through, you have that courage. And I'm going to place myself in the... Dorothy, I'm going to click my heels three times. One, two, three. There's no one like Sophia Wardlaw. There's no one like Sophia Wardlaw. There's no one like Sophia Wardlaw. I love you. I appreciate you, and there's nothing anybody can do about it.
You know, councilmembers, councilmembers, I joined the vice chair lady. You know, the words coming to my mind are grace and dignity, class, intelligent, incredibly sweet lady. I understand that Gatlinburg and places, beautiful places like that, and your beautiful family, but I want you to think that this retirement is a reward and a thanks for a body of work where here you are loved and you will be missed. Thank you.
Chair, we would be remiss to be that record now of her loving husband. Your loving husband, you have anything you'd like to say?
I actually have been all this been a lot to say, but that's, there's more to say and more to do. Just looking back on the years, I'm almost there myself. I'll have 25 with the city in July, and I'm just looking forward to the time just being with her. And the time is always precious, and family is always first and important. And the love I have for her is everlasting. And just know that with all she's been through, you just knew I just couldn't do it without her. We stand, and we're going to stay until the end. I love you.
We have an honor for you. Send your hands, Mr. Chair. Hold on. Got it. Ms. Wardlaw, would you like to say something, please?
I would also like to say thanks, first and foremost, for my family, my husband, my son.
Grandma Mike.
A little closer. Okay. My son, he is at UT Northwood. As a matter of fact, he's in the middle of a final right now, so he will look at the link later. My sister, oh, she made it. She always surprises me. She kept killing me all day today. I'm not going to be able to make it. That's my sister Velma and her granddaughter, my niece Kaylee, who joined us. And I just can't thank each and every one of you all enough, all the way, like I said, from the first council member that hired me, the late, great Florence Lefler, to Ms. Robinson, who had the compassion to understand what I was going through for a second time, and for Chairman Kovat, who shared that same compassion, who understands what it's like to have cancer in the family. But I made it through chemo again. I made it through radiation, and here I still stand. So with that, this decision wasn't easy at all, but there were so many days at home that I had to just come to terms with it. I don't ever want to hear those three words again, ever. I don't know what the Lord has in store for me, but what I can do for myself, I'm going to do it. To my council members that I have worked directly with, most recently Councilwoman Swerengen, before the pandemic hit, she was my only council member. And Councilwoman Junior, he was my council member before he went across the street along with Councilwoman Brown. And as Ed Senior said, it was my time to work back with him again, as well as Councilwoman Johnson, who I had a chance to work with you for a minute as well. But to each and every one of you, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the opportunities that have been afforded me, all the advice to carry me on, all the words of compassion, the car, the phone calls, the flowers, the balloons. Oh, the balloon were gorgeous. My daughter just came home for the summer, and I still had balloons. She said, Mama, you really got to let me balloons go. I just love balloons. And the food, the door dashes, even the personal delivery. From other divisions, directors, thank you all so much for checking up on me and saying that I was okay, and I am. To this wonderful, wonderful staff, like Ed Ford Junior's commissioner said, the mayor did take some of our staff away from us. And I looked at Juan S., I said, Juan S., what are we going to do? The staff have, part of the staff is gone. This is an election year. We made it. We did it. It was a lot of work. It was a lot of work, to the point where I, is it worth it? But there were so many nights, Juan S. and I, we were up here late, talking, working out things, figuring out things. You know, she's my partner. We've done so much together. We went to the same undergrad together, UT Martin. I didn't know her at the time, but I found out she was a graduate of UT Martin. We had children together. We both found out, we were pregnant at the same time. Both had girls, both in the month of May. We both lost our mothers, same year, same month, days apart. We both started graduate school, same year, graduated, same year. But after we lost our mom, I had told Juan S., okay, that's enough. I don't want to do anything else with you. That was it. That was it. But after we lost my mom, and then when Ed Ford Junior recommended me for the work on Juan S., that was a blessing. Thank you so much. It's been a blessing with every position I've held here at the council, all the way from secretary, executive assistant, administrative assistant, administrative assistant to the chair, ten years, ten chairman, analyst, senior analyst, council administrator, deputy chief of staff. Thank you. I always told Juan S., I would have started when she started, so we can ride into the sunset together. Well, God has a sense of humor. We're living in the same year. Not that anything I had planned, but God directed. The one thing, one thing told me, Sophia, you plan. You can plan all day long, but God is going to direct your footsteps. And he told the truth. So with that being said, you all have a wonderful staff, all of them, all of them. Even I had the pleasure of hiring, and I think we did such a wonderful job, and I do, I believe you all feel the same way, too. Juan S., Brooke, Ashley, all those interview process, Lekevia, Vice, on a better job. And I love each and every one of them. They called me. They checked up on me. Even if they didn't call, they sent a text message. I'm just checking in. It was a gift. I wasn't even expecting the gift. It was such a wonderful. They have a little happy sent in the mail. But I could go on and on, but I thank each and every one of you all from the bottom of my heart, my family putting up with me for all the long night, having to go pick my daughter up and bring her back down for council meetings, because I didn't have a babysitter. Just everything. I hope you forgive me. But anyway, but thank you all so much. I know you all got to get on with your, but thank you, thank you, thank you again.
Godspeed, Sophia Wardlaw. Clear skies, fair winds, smooth sailing. Let us continue our business. Madam Comptroller, please call item 47.
Item number forty, item number forty-seven is an appointment, City of Memphis, Chief of Police Services, Chief Serlin C. J. Davis, and there's a request for same night minutes.
Thank you. Let's let everybody get in before we move it and second it. Let's give them just some time. All right. Forgive me. Normally, you know how I like to run those meetings quick, but for this one, we go slow.
Probably going to need to get those mics moved over.
All right. Let's get back at it. Item three's been called. Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
One member, Mr. Chairman. I think we've got some mics that are going to move there.
Oh, my bad. Now we're good to go. Councilman Carlisle, you're recognized.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the committee met and recommends approval, and I so move.
I have a motion by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Council Lady Robinson. Are there any members in the queue seeking recognition? Councilman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you. And good afternoon and welcome again, Chief Davis. This, the nomination and the confirmation of the council is the most, particularly in this day and time, is one of the most significant responsibilities this council will have. And my vote today will not reflect my work and relationship with you. I felt, in this particular case, I served on the school board for this. There are some instances where I think that an external candidate would be better. There are other instances that I think that an internal candidate would be better. And so the one vote that I have will reflect what my personal feeling is for this position at this particular time, but it will not be indicative of the support that I will have for you as police director. One of the things I will share with you, I placed a phone call to Atlanta, and the individual that I spoke with did say this. He said that if I had to come to Memphis and support her, I would. And as somebody who has quite a bit of influence with me, but this is just my personal conviction of what I think the Memphis Police Department deserves. But that notwithstanding, whatever I can do to help make you successful, I will do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any other council members seeking recognition? Do y'all like to say something? We're good? Council Lady Logan, you're recognized.
Thank you as well, Chair. And once again, thank you, Chief Davis, for even being interested in this. And as I said, we talked a long time, and I too want you to know that I will also support you, and anything that we can do, that I can do to move Memphis forward as it relates to public safety, that's my highest intent. And so my vote is based on the same type of conviction, as well as my interest for my constituents as well. So I wish you the best. I'll be praying for much success for all of Memphis, and just wanted that put forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Council Lady Logan. Councilman Warren, you're in the queue, followed by Councilman Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Davis, Mr. Mayor, thank you for agreeing to come and serve here in Memphis. And we are really, really excited about moving forward with our group violence intervention plan, and your experience there will be invaluable. We have a lot of young men and women who are dying needlessly, and we are going to try to help you help them as much as possible. So thank you for being here, and welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Warren. Councilman Smiley, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't necessarily so, you know, I repeat, oftentimes I don't vote to voting day, and I really do mean that. So I came in today with an open mind during my interaction or meeting with soon-to-be Chief Davis. And I'm going to be honest with you all, she wowed me. I asked her a series of questions, the way that I do. I know my council members know I ask a lot of questions, and I asked her everything from her approach to...
of questions, and I asked her everything from her, uh, approach to, uh, handling, um, protests, from interacting with the, uh, well-respected, uh, folks who also interviewed in this process, who's supported by a lot of members of this body. And, uh, she gave me some very candid answers, um, to some of my questions. She heard my critiques, uh, and she took them well, she took them astride, and, uh, I think the one thing other than, you know, her, her candor, um, I can tell she really meant that everything she said, she looked me in my eyes, and I value that, uh, but I think the one thing that really sold me was seeing, uh, Inter Director Law stand up. He, uh, it has to be tough, because he was a part of the process, but he also told some of his colleagues that he served on the force with over twenty years, and he can, he stood up before us and said, she's the best. And that, that meant a lot to me. So for him to say that she's the best, um, my interaction with her, I think is, uh, is silly if we do anything but vote for, and, and, uh, I think, I, I hope that everyone, you know, give her all the support she needs, because we know the challenges of this city. We know that we're facing a rising crime rate, we know that, you know, we have a lot of problems here. And if this council does not lend her all of our support, what you can expect is more things to continue to go wrong, it will get, it will get worse. So hopefully, uh, this body extends its full support to soon to be Chief Davis, uh, and for the critics, I want you to know that, you know, based on my, my impression of her, she's gonna bring fresh ideas, and I think we can't continue to do the same thing over and over and expect different results. She brings up something different, she brings up a new perspective, and I look forward to supporting her tenure as the Memphis Police Director, and with that, I call for the question.
Thank you very much. Uh, I got one last comment before we call it.
It's all good, brother.
I just do wanna say, welcome, uh, to Memphis, um, we hope that you find it welcoming, we hope that you take on and enjoy the challenge, we look forward to working with you, supporting you. I do want to take a minute to recognize the mayor and his staff. Thank you, uh, so much, uh, for bringing, uh, CJ to this body and to this city, and for all the hard work that goes into doing that. Uh, it, it doesn't come without its critiques and its criticisms, but ultimately the end result brought us, as my colleague said, the best candidate, uh, and we're eternally grateful for that, and we look forward to getting to work and rolling up our sleeves. And I second my colleague's motion on the previous question.
It's probably. Seeing no other members in the queue, you ready to go to work? Alright, it's been moved by, uh, Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Council Lady Robinson, assume you're ready to vote on item forty-seven, Madam Comptroller, call the roll.
Councilmember Canali.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones. Logan. Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swearengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Colbette.
Aye. Let's get to work.
Yes, sir, we have same nine minutes on the bottom. As Councilmember Strickland, same nine minutes. That's correct. Uh, Madam Comptroller, give us our fiscal consent agenda.
That would take us to item number twelve, a resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars from Urban Land Institute for Volunteer Coordination and Park Activation Efforts. This resolution is sponsored by Park Services. Item number thirteen is a resolution to accept grant fund in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Tennessee Department of Health for Project Diabetes Year Three. This resolution is sponsored by Park Services, there's a request for same night minutes. Item number fourteen is a resolution to accept in-kind donation in the value of fifty dollars from Home Depot for support of community garden efforts at Cunningham Community Center. This resolution is sponsored by Park Services, there's a request for same night minutes. Item number fifteen is a resolution to accept grant fund in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars from Petco Foundation. This resolution is sponsored by Memphis Animal Services, there is a request for same night minutes. Item number sixteen is a resolution to accept and appropriate state internet crimes against children grant funds in the amount of nine hundred eighty-five thousand dollars from the State of Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Program. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Police Services, and there is a request for same night minutes. Um, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our fiscal consent agenda items.
To approve the fiscal consent, fiscal consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Alright, I have a motion by Councilman Jones, seconded by Vice Chair Lady Swearengen, seeing no members in the queue seeking recognition, assume you're ready to vote on the fiscal consent agenda. Madam Comptroller, call the roll.
Councilmember Canali.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swearengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Colbette.
Aye, that fiscal consent passes. Madam Comptroller, take me to item forty-three.
Item number forty-three is a resolution reallocating and appropriating twenty thousand dollars in awarded city council community grant fund for fiscal year twenty-one. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Ford.
Request for same night minutes?
There's a request for same night minutes.
Thank you very much, Councilman Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, committee met, recommends approval as amended, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Carlisle as amended, seeing no members seeking recognition. Councilman, uh, Jones has a question.
Uh, and actually, Mr. Ford isn't here, but based upon the resolution that we were given in committee, this totaled fifteen thousand, but this says twenty thousand, so I was trying to see what the difference was.
Correct. So the amendment, let's see if I have it here.
Uh, so I'll, I'll read it again, just now therefore be it resolved, that the Memphis City Council reallocate twenty thousand, as noted, is SW Memphis CDC five thousand, a fresh start to a new beginning five thousand, Independent Center Incorporated five thousand, and GWERC five thousand, uh, which, which was added, uh, after committee.
Okay. That's the as amended part, right?
That's the as amended.
That's the as amended. Further thoughts, questions on this? Alright, moved by Morgan, seconded by Carlisle, assume you're ready to vote on item forty-three, Madam Comptroller, call the roll.
Councilmember Canali.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones.
Aye.
Logan.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swearengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Colbette.
Aye, item passes, Madam Comptroller, call item forty-four.
Item number forty-four is a resolution approving a lease between Withers Collection Inc. and the Downtown Memphis Commission, manager of the Bill Street Historic District. This resolution is sponsored by General Service, Services Division, there's a request for same night minutes.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilman Smiley. Committee may recommend for the move.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved by Smiley, seconded by Warren, any members seeking recognition? Seeing none, assume you're ready to vote, moved by Smiley, seconded by Warren, item forty-four, Madam Comptroller, call the roll.
Member Canali. Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones.
Aye.
Logan. Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley.
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swearengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Colbette.
Aye, item passes, did you inhale helium, Carlisle?
Just keeping it, just, just keep it real.
Alright, cool, cool, cool. Madam Comptroller, would you go back to item forty-seven and note Council Lady Logan is abstaining? And then let's go to item forty-five. Lot of love on this field. No pressure or anything.
It, it works, it goes off and on. Okay, item number forty-five is, um, a resolution opposing the closure of Scott Street Bridge. This resolution is sponsored by Councilman Canali, Carlisle, Morgan, and Warren, there's a request for same night minutes.
Councilman Smiley? Second. Seconded by, uh, Council Lady Johnson, seeing no members in the queue seeking recognition. Moved by Smiley, seconded by, uh, Council Lady Johnson, assume you're ready to vote on item forty-five, Madam Comptroller, call the roll.
Councilmember Canali.
Yes.
Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones.
Aye.
Logan. Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson. Smiley. Vice Chairwoman Swearengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Colbette.
Aye, item passes, call item forty-six.
Item number forty-six is a resolution accepting allocating and appropriating federal grant funds in the amount of fifteen million dollars from the State of Tennessee, Tennessee Department of Health for Enhancement Detection Expansion ELC. This resolution is sponsored by Executive Division, there's a request for same night minutes.
Thank you very much, Councilman Warren.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the committee met and recommended approval, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved by Warren, seconded by Carlisle, seeing no members in the queue seeking recognition, assume you're ready to vote on item forty-six, moved by Warren, seconded by Carlisle, call the roll.
Councilmember Canali. Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones.
Aye.
Logan. Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley. Vice Chairwoman Swearengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Colbette.
Aye, that item passes, staff, double check me, but I think that just got us through all our same night minutes, and while we're doing that. Outstanding, thank you, uh, Madam Comptroller, let's go through, uh, the agendas, let's call the consent agenda next.
On our consent agenda, which starts with item number four, we have our, um, tax levy ordinance, which is up for second, up for, oh, ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the tax levy on the assessed values on all properties of every species within the city limits for general purposes for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-one, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, up for first reading. Ordinance number five, seven, eight, five, is sponsored by the Finance Division. Item number five is an ordinance fixing the tax rate of the City of Memphis for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, up for first reading. Ordinance number five, seven, eight, six, is sponsored by the Finance Division. Item number six is an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter ninety-two, of the Code of Ordnances for the City of Memphis, to extend the Sunset Clause for the Equal Business Opportunity Program, up for first reading. Ordinance number five, seven, eight, seven, is sponsored by the Administration. Item number seven is hail, item number eight is hail, item number nine is hail, that would take us to item number ten, which is a resolution approving the engineering plans for Home and Malone ASPR, contract number CR dash five, three, six, seven. And item number eleven is a resolution approving the engineering plans for Spring Tree Shopping Center, five, seven, zero Pleasant View Road, contract number CR dash five, three, six, eight. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Uh, Madam Comptroller, seven, unless somebody knows differently, seven was not hailed, but go ahead.
Well, let us read seven into the, um, um, hmm, into the record. Item number seven is an ordinance approving a new historic overlay district located in the area roughly bound by Autumn Avenue to the north, North Claybrook Street to the east, Popular Avenue to the south, and Interstate two forty to the west, containing approximately eighty-one point three zero acres in the historic overlay district up for first reading. This ordinance is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development, it was hailed from April fourth, the case number is CTHD, ordinance number five, seven, eight, three, and I understand we may have some amendments to this at a later date. So that does conclude our consent agenda.
Outstanding, can I get a motion? I got a motion by Warren, who seconds? Seconded by Council Lady Robinson, seeing no members, uh, Carlisle's in the queue?
I think we have that language for item number seven already submitted, um.
Yeah, so it was submitted, um, to our office on today.
Okay.
So it's up for first reading.
Okay.
Okay, so, let me tell you what to do, because it's on consent, we'll hear it again, uh, in two weeks, let's make sure it's in there, but for now, we'll be assuming.
I'm cool with that, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
Further thoughts, questions? Anybody else seeking recognition? Yes. Alright, been moved by Warren, seconded by Robinson, assume you're ready to vote on the consent agenda, Val, call the roll.
Councilmember Canali. Carlisle.
Aye.
Easter Thomas.
Yes.
Ford. Johnson. Jones.
Aye.
Logan. Morgan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Aye.
Smiley. Vice Chairwoman Swearengen.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Chairman Colbette.
Uh, aye, consent agenda passes. I hope you've had plenty of water, Val. MLGNW fiscal consent agenda.
That will take us to item number seventeen, a resolution ratifying and awarding contract number one, two, two, four, nine, e-source membership agreement through TV PPA to e-source companies LLC for the funded amount of one million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. Item number eighteen is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Mythics Inc. for Oracle Application License Expansion in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Item number nineteen is a resolution awarding contract number one, two, two, nine, five, Oracle Maintenance and Support twenty twenty-one to Mythics Inc. in the funded amount of five million, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and fifty-three cents. Item number twenty is a resolution approving an annual salary in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars for IT business consultant position, numbers one, zero.
Seven, zero, five, three.
Number twenty-one is a resolution approving change number three, contract number one, two, zero, nine, six, formally, C two, zero, three, three, Hot Sticks Maintenance, with Erby Tool and Safety doing business as Erby Company, in the funded, not to exceed amount of forty-one thousand dollars. Item number twenty-two is a resolution approving change number one to contract number one, two, two, nine, one, MLG, customer utility bill, Boulder, Inserter, Bill Street Landing, with Bell &amp; Howell LLC in the funded of sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars. Item number twenty-three is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Prime Control for electric cabinets and spare parts in the amount of two hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Item number twenty-four is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Brighter Days and Nights Inc. for gas valve actuators in the amount of sixty-three thousand, uh, seven hundred dollars and thirteen cents. Item number twenty-five is a resolution approving change number three to contract number one, one, six, eight, two, Customer Care Center Backup Communications Plan with AT&amp;T Business Systems in the funded amount of four hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and seventy cents. Item number twenty-six is a resolution approving change number two to contract number one, two, one, zero, five, Overhead Water Storage Tank Painting for Capableville Stone Bridge and Egypt Central with Kerns Construction Services LLC in the funded amount of eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Item number twenty-seven is a resolution approving change number seven to contract number nine, nine, five, five, Partial Funding of Pollution Control Groundwater Quality Control Program with. groundwater quality control program with Memphis and Shelby County Health Department to authorize the annual repayments in the funded amount of one hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and ten cents. Item number twenty-eight is a resolution approving change number two to contract number one, one, eight, nine, six, internet service provider with Windstream Enterprise in the funded amount of fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. Item number twenty-nine, resolution approving change number two to contract number one, one, eight, five, two, internet service provider with six, business, formerly level. In the funded amount of sixty-six thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars. Item number thirty, resolution approving change number two to contract number one, two, zero, four, three, property and boiler insurance, FM Global, approved rates not to exceed two million, one hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. Item number thirty-one, resolution awarding a purchase order to Scruggs Equipment Company, Inc. for the purchase of hydraulic front mounted truck winches in the amount of one hundred, three thousand, eight hundred dollars. Item number thirty-two is a resolution awarding purchase orders for two-ton steel utility service bodies to Utility Equipment Service, Inc. in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred, twenty-three dollars, and Scruggs Equipment Company in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred eighty-two dollars. Item number thirty-three, resolution awarding a purchase order to Summit Truck Group for two-ton cab and crew cab and chassis in the amount of one million, five hundred, one thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars. And our final item is number thirty-four, a resolution awarding a thirty-six month purchase order to Universal Scaffolds and Equipment for bare aluminum conductor coated steel reinforced strand pelican wire in the amount of five hundred eighty-two dollars, five hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW fiscal consent items. Straw and wire.
Well done, Val.
Thank you.
Council Lady Robinson?
Second.
Moved by Robinson, seconded by Warren, seeing no, uh, Councilman Carlisle.
Yes, uh, is there a representative from MLGW on the line? I have a question on item twenty.
Yes, this Dana Jeans, MLGW CFO.
Dana, uh, this says an annual salary for a business consultant. Is this a full-time employee or is this a consultant?
This is a full-time employee. This is in our IT, um, what's called our client services area. Uh, this is a person that, uh, works with, uh, various, uh, functional divisions like construction or finance or, uh, engineering and, uh, helps, uh, develop, uh, specifications and so on for, for IT projects and, and manages those projects, provides, uh, documentation and, uh, training for, uh, various implementations. So, yes.
Sorry, my bad, go ahead.
Yes, it is, is it, it is a full-time, uh, employee.
Okay, uh, my follow-up to that is, is this in relation to, at all to the Baker Tilly Study, uh, report, uh, discussing the IT department and, and IT functions, uh, for MLGW?
It is, uh, partially related to that, uh, in the, in the, uh, sense of, uh, trying to develop, uh, better synergies with IT and, uh, the operational areas, uh, to improve efficiencies, uh, better manage projects and, uh, provide documentation of, uh, processes and, and, um, systems.
Thank you, uh, m- m- Madam Chair of the MLGW Committee, I would appreciate it if next meeting we could have an update from the MLGW executive team on how they are faring in, uh, executing the Baker Tilly Study, uh, and recommendations, uh, first for their optimization. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I yield the four, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Carlisle. I yield, members seeking recognition? Seeing none, moved by, uh, Council Lady Robinson, seconded by Councilman Warren, assuming you're ready to vote on the MLGW fiscal consent agenda. Madam Comptroller, call her on.
Councilmember Canali?
Yes.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford? Johnson? Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swerengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairman Collette?
Aye, item passes. Please call item thirty-five.
Item number thirty-five is appointment to the Memphis Alcohol Commission Chad Hampton, Light Authority of Memphis Brent Hooks. Memphis and Shelby Community Redevelopment Agency Candace Stewart. Memphis and Shelby County Sports Authority Kyle Beasley. Reappointment Rodney Douglas. Center City Revenue Finance Corporation Board Reappointment Jerry Moskowitz. That concludes our appointment.
That was good. Thank you very much, uh, Councilman Carlisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met, recommends approval, and I so move.
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Carlisle, seconded by Councilman Morgan, seeing no members in the queue seeking recognition, assume you're ready to vote on item thirty-five. Madam Comptroller, call her on.
Councilmember Canali? Carlisle?
Aye.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford? Johnson? Jones?
Aye.
Logan?
Aye.
Morgan?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swerengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairman Collette?
Aye, item passes. Please call item forty, forty-one, please.
Item number forty-one is a resolution accepting twenty-twenty-one reducing diesel emissions for healthier Tennessee funds from the Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation in the amount of two hundred five thousand dollars to be used for partial funding for the purchase of four ambulances with idle mitigation system. This resolution is sponsored by the Fire Division.
Thank you very much, Councilman Warren.
Yes, we secure the committee met and recommend the approval after.
Second. Been moved by Councilman Warren, seconded by Councilman Carlisle, seeing no members in the queue seeking recognition, assume you're ready to vote on item forty-one. Madam Comptroller, call her on.
Councilmember Canali? Carlisle?
Aye.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford? Johnson? Jones?
Aye.
Logan? Morgan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swerengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairman Collette?
Aye, that item passes. Please call item forty-two.
Item number forty-two is a resolution approving an amended rate schedule for the law firm of Baker, Donaldson, Bearman, Codwell, and Urkelwitz, PC, for legal services rendered concerning water rights litigation, patents, environmental torts and contract litigation, regulatory matters, and other legal matters uniquely related to the utility industry. This was held from April twentieth.
Thank you very much, can I get a motion, second?
Second.
Who moved it? Uh, moved by Councilman Smiley, seconded by Councilman Warren. I see no members in the queue seeking recognition, assume you're ready to vote on item forty-two. Madam Comptroller, call her on.
Councilmember Canali?
Carlisle?
Aye.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford? Johnson? Jones?
Aye.
Logan? Morgan?
Yes.
Robinson? Smiley? Vice Chairwoman Swerengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Please, Chairman Collette? Just hit me.
Go ahead, dear.
Just say, not here.
One's having helium and one's just, okay. All right. Please, uh, and I am a yes on that. That passes, thank you for playing. Uh, unless I'm missing anything, that takes us through our.
Item, item forty, Mr. Chairman.
Item forty was a hold. Thirty-nine was withdrawn. All right. Don't do that. All right, did I get everything? Okay. Okay. I know forty. Okay. Uh, colleagues, in the interest of time, because we're working our way through, uh, an MLGW issue from earlier, uh, why don't we go ahead and read our letters to the council? And then we'll do that, and then we'll do same night minutes. So why don't we do letters next? And I'm sorry to report, apparently Joe Kent has not joined us this time. All right, if you give me the wording, that'd be cool.
We have two comments, we have our comments for the evening. Catherine Jones of thirty-two ninety-seven Dartmark, uh, Memphis, Tennessee, three, one, two, five. The ordinance on loud modified mufflers has been passed. Yet the loud noise is still going on, and I never see any police pulling these cars over to address the issue. Why is this violation still being allowed? Comment number two, Dustin Kane, three, sixty, North Avalon Street, Memphis, three, eight, one, one, two. Hi, my name is Dustin Kane, and I am a COC Project Coordinator with Community Alliance for the Homeless. CAFTH acts as the designated HUD lead agency to help lead effective practices to end homelessness in Memphis and Shelby County. Each year, the city of Memphis spends nearly three million dollars on maintenance for properties that the city does not own. The City Memphis Division of Public Works twenty-twenty-one. From a housing services perspective, the Memphis Affordable Housing Trust Fund has the potential to further ensure that more houses are up to code and that are able to safely rehouse more of our neighbors experiencing homelessness. CAFTH is a partner organization of Building Memphis, which supports the development of healthy and vibrant economically sustainable neighborhoods throughout the city. I am writing to voice my strong support for the MAHTF. This fund would allow nonprofit developers to build quality, affordable housing units and make critical repairs needed for our community. Safe, healthy, and stable housing is funded, 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 foundationally to increase prosperity and opportunity across Memphis. Urges the city of the council to approve the mayor's recommendation to fully and annually fund the Memphis Affordable Housing Trust Fund in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Thank you, Dustin Kane. This concludes the comments, Mr. Chair, for the day.
I nominate Councilman Carlisle to go check on Mr. Kent. Uh, is there that by explanation? Microphone's back on and working now. All right, that concludes our, uh, our, our letters to the council. Uh, Madam Comptroller, call item forty-eight.
Item number forty-eight is a resolution approving, uh, MLGW settlement in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you very much, can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Councilman Jones, seconded by Councilman Warren. Seeing no members in the queue seeking recognition, assume you're ready to vote on item forty-eight. Madam Comptroller, call her on. Oh, and this is same night minutes.
There's a request for same night minutes.
Without objection, done.
Councilmember Canali? Carlisle?
Aye.
Easter Thomas?
Yes.
Ford? Johnson? Jones?
Aye.
Logan? Morgan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Aye.
Smiley?
Aye.
Vice Chairwoman Swerengen?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Chairman Collette?
Aye, that item passes. Now we are to same night minutes. Uh, Madam Vice Chairman?
The same night minute items are one, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight, and I so move.
Second. Been moved by Vice Chair Lady, uh, Swerengen, seconded by Councilman Carlisle. Is there any discussion on same night minutes?